Do you want to go ahead and start Donna, and then I'll let her in as she comes in?
Okay, that would be good. We'll have to have Steve go ahead and take her place temporarily. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so we will proceed through a call to order the City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 21st in the year 2021. And at the beginning, we were asked if any planning commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered it is to declare their conflict at this time. And then do we do the roll call when Joan comes on, or do we do the roll call now?
Well, that's right. We started without Janet. Where's Janet? Okay. I will take Janet's place.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Dynan? Commissioner Bassel?
Here.
Commissioner Link?
I'm here.
Commissioner Fenrich?
Here.
And Commissioner Rubin?
Yeah.
Alternate Rubin, excuse me. And Joan Stewart, are you in? Not yet. We'll watch for her. Thank you.
Okay. So the public comments now. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon for record purposes, your state, your name, city of residence, and please make your comments directly to the planning commission board.
Excuse me, Gabrielle, there is a phone number that just popped up, and I'm wondering if it's maybe Joan.
Okay, let me check with her.
Thank you. Okay, Steve, thank you.
Hi, Joan, is that you?
She's on mute.
Yeah, I'm asking her to unmute.
Actually, I don't think it's her because she's calling me.
There she is.
Yes. Hello, is that Joan? Phone number 604-1867, is that Joan? They're not responding, so maybe they are on the phone with you, Donna.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay.
All right. So are there any public comments that you see, Donna?
No, I have no emails, and I do not see a raised hand.
Okay. So we will move on to the consent calendar, item two. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission board unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the planning commission board. So item 2.1 is posting the agenda. The agenda for the September 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center Bulletin Board, City Hall North and South Bulletin Boards, the post office, the city website, and emailed to the library on September 8th of 2021. Item 2.2 is the approval of the September 21st, 2021 agenda. This provides an opportunity for the planning commission or staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order. So the recommendation is approval by roll call, but it looks like.
Let's see. I just had somebody raise their hands and said that they couldn't get in during public comment. Can we maybe visit or complete the consent agenda and then revisit the public comment?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
So do you do the roll call for the approval?
Okay, do we?
Chair, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar. This is Commissioner Dynan, and I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as shown.
This is Commissioner Bassel, I second.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Commissioner Dynan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich?
Yes.
Alternate Rubin?
Yes.
The consent calendar agenda was approved 5-0. Thank you. Okay, if we could reopen the public comments. Let me pull up the chat. Okay, so Annabelle says, I tried to raise my hand when public comments were asked for. Can you?
So, yes, I'm asking her to unmute.
Thank you.
So she would have to mute her phone or device. Annabelle, if you can unmute your device, please.
Well, I'm not sure if she can hear us, or maybe she is having technical difficulties.
Hi.
Oh, good, good. I'm glad you made it through.
Yeah, I just kind of lost. I'm sorry to delay you guys. So my question is, Donna, do you know of an update of Riverwalk Draft EIR? Is there any news about that so we public and prepare?
Well, actually, in the public comment section, you're supposed to, you know, provide comments, and then staff will get back to you. We don't normally answer any comments or suggestions that it's brought up during this time period.
Okay.
But at the end of the meeting, when staff can give their reports, I will try to address this.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Chair Link?
All right, so on to item number three, the planning commission public hearings. The public notice for item 3.1 was published on September 8th, 2021 in the Riverbank News. Item 3.1 is the accessory dwelling unit code amendment, design guidelines, and fee study workshop. So the City of Riverbank is in the process of amending the Riverbank code, accordance with related to accessory dwelling units. Preparing guidelines for ADUs and options for fee reduction study to promote the development of the ADUs in the city. The workshop is intended to provide information related to the types of ADUs, current state law, location in which they can be built, and how many, and other related regulations. The workshop will also include discussion related to preparation of design guidelines and to solicit input from planning commission and the public on design principles and goals. A workshop is not a project pursuant to sequoia guidelines. So it looks like we also approve this by roll call? Or is it, it's informational only, so?
Right, this is informational only. You don't have any resolutions or ordinances. Thank you. So, so tonight, like you said, we are having a workshop on ADUs. Staff has hired consultants from JB Anderson Land Use Planning. David Niskanen and John Anderson are with us tonight, and I believe David will be doing the presentation for us. So take it away, David.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Donna, and thank you, planning commissioners, for the opportunity to talk about accessory dwelling units. I know there's been updates to state law that we need to provide information about, as well as kind of our next steps with regards to ADUs. Gabrielle, if you don't mind, could you stop sharing your screen, and I can share mine, and then I can I can present the PowerPoint. Just one moment. Okay, you should all be able to see my screen now with the PowerPoint.
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, so tonight's workshop is about accessory dwelling units.
I'm going to go through the presentation, but feel free to stop at any time during the presentation comments or otherwise. And tonight's presentation outline will include discussing the unit types for accessory dwellings, state regulations, and provide a little bit of background because there's been part of the state law that's been approved over the over the last four or five years or so. And then also discuss fee and optional fee exemptions. Utility connection and how that works when it's on the same side as a single-family dwelling unit or multifamily. And then also talk about the Riverbank ordinance and timeline in which we're going to be coming back to planning commission with an actual prepared ordinance for your review and consideration. So first of all, what is an accessory dwelling unit? They're also called ADUs, secondary units or granny flats. Basically, they're small living units that includes a kitchen and bathroom, and they're allowed on properties that are zoned residential with a single-family home duplex, and also allowed in multifamily zones as well. And in essence, there are two types of ADUs, detached and attached ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units. And on the right side of the screen shows kind of the different variations. So detached, of course, would be freestanding and detached from the main dwelling unit, typically a single-family home. Attached would be attached to that home. And then a lot of times, there's an interior conversion such as an attic or basement, and then junior accessory dwelling unit includes a conversion of a bedroom. And then there's garage apartment conversions, as well as above the garage units that are also available and used. For the most part, the most common ADUs are going to be detached and attached. There are some garage conversions in my experience, but for the most part, what Riverbank will see and what most cities will see will be detached and attached accessory dwelling units. A an accessory dwelling unit, there's a couple pictures on the right. The top one is the detached. It's located on the same parcels as a single-family residence duplex or multifamily residential. And then its complete independent living includes a kitchen, bathroom, a separate entrance from the main dwelling. The picture on the bottom is a conversion of a garage to above the garage. And then it may be rented or occupied by family, guests, caretakers, et cetera. And then it's permitted by right and permitted in residential zones. What permitted by right means is that it doesn't have to go through any special planning approval. It doesn't have to come back to planning commission for a discretionary review. They can go, property owner can go right straight to building and get a building permit for an accessory dwelling, and as long as it meets all of the development standards from the state, as well as what the city requires by ordinance, then a property owner can develop an accessory dwelling unit. A junior accessory dwelling unit, on the other hand, is contained entirely within a single-family residence. It's 500 square feet maximum in size and must include at least an efficiency kitchen, which basically means it's a fridge, stove top, doesn't have the full kitchen, doesn't have to have the full kitchen facilities that accessory dwelling unit has to have. And then independent bathroom facilities are not required, so it can share the same restroom facilities as a single-family home. And just to provide a little bit of background on the accessory dwelling law as it relates to the state, the first law that was passed was in 1982, which enacted the second unit law. And then over the years, in 2016, 2017, 2019, and most recently 2020, the state has passed a number of bills that provided development regulations and different types allowed, and how many are allowed on single-family and multifamily zoned properties, as well as provided that accessory dwelling units are a by-right use. Meaning, again, it doesn't have to go through any discretionary review. It can go straight to the building. The recent state law modified the accessory dwelling and junior accessory dwelling law, and I'll go through that a little bit later in the presentation. And, and just to provide an update, the reason why we are we're doing this update, and we're also, the city received a grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development to update the municipal code and prepare pre-approved ADU building plans in cooperation with other cities in Stanislaus County. And I'll go through, the actual draft plans are available, and I have them as part of the presentation that I'll go through later on.
So David, the state law, back up a minute, back up a minute. So, so the state law, sorry, this is John Anderson. The state laws that went into effect as of January 2020 and 2021, those are the ones that are really pushing, you know, it's almost a state mandate, these ADU units on local government. And so a lot of the a lot of the things that David's going through are, they're codified in state law as if there's not really much the local jurisdictions can do to to, to to not allow them. And, and really, at this point, it's really, okay, if they're allowed, which they are allowed by state law, how do we accommodate them? And what David's going to talk about in a little bit has to do with a cooperative agreement that the planning departments in Stanislaus County have put together, and Donna was a big part of this, to make sure that they have pre-approved plans for ADU units in their, in their stockpile, if you will, at City Hall that could be used by folks that are really interested in promoting these ADU units. So anyway, sorry, David, keep going.
No, that's okay. Thank you for the additional info. That's, that's good. So some of the key 2020 changes in the ADU regulations is a new category of special ADUs. Those are just state-required ADUs at a specific size and setback that I'll go into in the next slide. And then junior ADUs are now allowed in any room and attached garages. And replacement parking is not required for garage conversions. So those are some of the key areas that changed in the 2020 law. And as it relates to the number of accessory dwelling units that are allowed on a single-family residence, state law allows that one junior accessory dwelling unit and one attached ADU can be allowed, or one junior ADU and one detached ADU under a specific size requirement that the city may choose to, to do. So like John said, the state is really pushing local jurisdictions, and codified as part of state law, the amount, the size, the setbacks, development regulations that local jurisdictions have to adhere to and codify as part of their ordinance. And that includes multifamily residential. So in a multifamily residential project, state law allows the conversion of any non-habitable portion of a multi-unit development, and then also allows at least one detached ADU and up to 25% up to existing multifamily dwelling units. So it allows a couple different variations of ADUs in multifamily developments. Of course, there's always size constraints as far as the property size that will impact whether or not an accessory dwelling, especially detached, will be will be allowed, or will be possible on a multifamily residential site, but regardless, state law does allow accessory dwelling units in multifamily residential settings.
David, let me interrupt you for a minute. It mentioned special ADUs. What are they?
I have a slide, and the next one that goes into what the special ADUs, basically, it's an ADU that's 800 square feet and is four feet setbacks and no more than 16 feet high. That can be allowed in any single-family mixed-use and multifamily zone. But I have a table later on the presentation that compares it all. As it relates to the size of the accessory dwelling unit, for attached accessory dwelling units, it's no more than 50% of the primary dwelling's floor area. And then detached ADUs can be up to 1,200 square feet, notwithstanding the special ADU that the state allows, which is 800 square feet. And then this kind of just provides a visual of what is possible on a single-family home. The top image shows that a 500-square-foot junior accessory dwelling unit and a 1,200-square-foot detached ADU is possible if the city decides not to impose a size limitation. So the city can impose a size limitation on the detached ADU when it's combined with a junior ADU. And it's important to note that this, this scenario would be done at the same time. So if someone wants, someone came in into an exist, or came into the city and proposed a junior ADU plus a detached ADU, then they would have to do it at the same time. They can't add on to it later.
So, so David, how would, how would the city restrict the size of the accessory detached ADU? Would that be by lot coverage, or how? How, I know, what was typical? What have you seen?
Typically, it's codified as part of the ordinance, so the ordinance would allow for a detached accessory dwelling unit at 1,200 square feet, and then also allow a junior accessory dwelling unit and a detached ADU when the detached ADU is 800 square feet. So it's only when it's combined, when you have both of those scenarios. Now, the city and planning commission may weigh in on this. The city can decide to not impose that size limitation, so there could be a scenario where a 500-square-foot junior accessory dwelling unit and a 1,200 detached ADU is allowed. So typically, I've seen it codified in that, in that manner. Does that answer your question, John?
Because I think, I think in the end of the day, we need to, because a lot of this is all required by state law, right? We need to share with the commission, or at least with Donna, they can share with the commission, you know, what what exceptions they can promote in their local code, because the overall overreaching goal in all of this with the state and with recent passage of a couple new Senate bills is to try to promote density on existing lots, existing lots which may be either infill or existing lots, you know, somewhere else in the city, so.
Yeah. Gives you, gives a, provides a overview of what the ADU type, size, setbacks, and height that state law allows. So like I was talking about, the statewide exemption ADU is 800 square feet with four foot setbacks and a maximum height of 16 feet. So, and then the detached that's allowed can be up to 1,200 square feet, again, with a four-foot setback, and the city can choose to impose an existing unit height or a 17-foot height limit. And then, like I said before, attached is 50% of the existing unit. And then the bottom row is a conversion. So if someone comes in and wants to convert a, an accessory building in their backyard, and that accessory building just so happens to be three feet from the from the rear and the side, side yard fence or lot line, then the conversion can still occur, and they wouldn't have to move that building. It can just stay where it's at at three feet. So state law allows for that as well. So this provides just an overview of what can be converted, like a garage, pool house, rather fully enclosed accessory building. And then state law allows for an additional 15 or 150 square feet for like a patio cover, or, or in addition for ingress and egress to the, to the accessory unit. As it relates to off-street parking, for the longest, for a number of years, the requirement was that one parking space is required, and it still is that. So one space is required for each unit, for each accessory dwelling unit. The key is that it can be in tandem in the parking in the driveway. So a lot of times, if it's just one accessory dwelling unit, it can be accommodated via the driveway. There are exceptions to the rule where no, where no off-street parking requirement is imposed, and those are when the ADU has no bedrooms. It's within one-half mile of public transit. It's part of, or of a pro, proposed or existing residence accessory structure. And then it's within an architecturally or historically significant district. So for the most part, it's that, it's that within one-half mile of public transit. Public transit is defined as a bus stop, ace train. It can actually include quite a bit as far as the definition is concerned. So for Riverbank, for the, for the most part, the one tandem, the one parking space will be in tandem in the driveway to the existing unit. And the exceptions don't really play a big factor. Maybe for a denser city it would, but I would expect that the tandem parking in the driveway would accommodate the accessory dwelling in the city. As it relates to fees, just like any new residential development, the city can impose impact fees that would cover traffic, it would cover sewer, water, storm. Though state law has now imposed that no impact fee can be required for ADUs less than 750 square feet. Accessory dwelling units above 750 square feet, the impact fees are charged at a proportional rate to the main dwelling unit. So if the accessory dwelling unit's 1,000 square feet, and the main dwelling is 2,000 square feet, those impact fees would be 50% of what normally would be the impact fees. So that's part of state law. The city can't, doesn't really have much wiggle room, actually really any wiggle room, unfortunately, with, with this requirement. It's just mainly to make sure that that no impact fees are charged for less than 750 square feet. Now, as it relates to utility connections, there's a lot, state law has kind of changed a few times as it relates to this requirement. The most recent state law states that ADUs converted from existing space or junior ADUs are not considered a a residential unit when, when calculating connection fees or capacity charges. Unless it's within a new single-family unit. So if a new unit is built with an ADU, then of course, the charge would be full. Now, the city may require a new or separate utility connection for detached ADU and charge a connection fee, but that connection fee has to be proportionate to the burden of the proposed ADU. So, I mean, really, what it all comes down to is that when a new accessory dwelling unit is proposed in the city, the, the city has a very limited opportunity to make sure that the connection fees are imposed. And mainly, it's for the detached accessory dwelling unit is where the city can impose a new connection and can impose the connection fee or capacity charges. When it's a junior accessory dwelling unit or something that's attached to the main unit, it's not supposed to be considered new, quote-unquote, when calculating those fees. So it's a little convoluted, a little confusing when reading state law, but that's really what it comes down to. The city can charge fees for detached accessory dwelling units is, is really the bottom line. Now, our goal is to prepare the ordinance. Right now, Riverbank doesn't have a, a single area in the ordinance that covers accessory dwelling units that's consistent with state law. So our goal is to put it all in one place that it's, so it's easy to read. State law can be very confusing, a lot of legalese, and so we just want to make sure that all of the requirements are in one place, and that it's easy to read and understand. And specifically, we would be updating chapter 153, that's the zoning chapter, and then shuffling some of the chapters around to accommodate all the ADU regulations. And then um, shuffling some of the chapters around to accommodate uh, all the ADU regulations in one, one place. And our current schedule um, today is to, of course, present this public workshop today and, uh, on September twenty-first. And then come back to you uh, next month. With a prepared ordinance for you to um, review and consider. And then um, as it stands right now, our, our goal for city council is the first string in November. And then the second reading in December. So and not in that October meeting and it's still, it, it'll be a public hearing, so it'll be noticed. Um, you'll have a chance to actually review the full ordinance um, for accessory dwelling units. That'll cover the topics that I, I spoke to, spoke about uh, tonight. As uh, John stated, the city is uh, in coordination with Stanislaus County, Series, Modesto, Oakdale. Thrallack and Waterford uh, have a prepared uh, ADU plans. So the purpose of the ADU building plans is that someone, uh, property owner can come into the city. And use those plans for their, for their use for the accessory dwelling unit. So it provides more of a streamlined um, opportunity for property owners in the city to um, build an accessory dwelling unit. And I just want to say, these are just draft plans, they're subject to change, they're hot off the press as of uh, last week. So. Um, they're definitely not in final form, but it gives you an idea of what some of the options are, including. One, two, three bedroom options as well as a two bedroom option over the garage. Um, so let me just go through those. So this is the first set. It's a two hundred and fifty square foot, one bedroom. And I have the PDF on my s- uh, open on my screen too, so I can always zoom in if planning commissioner wants to take a look closer look. At one of the floor planes or one of the elevations. And like um, I talked about earlier, we are also working on the accessory dwelling unit design guidelines. And some of the principles that we're looking to um. Include in the design guidelines are, are cons- would be consistent with what um. The building plans have. So material wise, using stucco, um, using wing scotting. Using good materials for the roof, consistency with. The main dwelling unit are some of the principles that we'd like to talk with any commission tonight about. This is another option at four hundred square feet and one bedroom. So top is the uh, floor plan and, and then the bottom panel is the uh, elevations. And then five hundred and fifty square feet, one bedroom. This one's color elevation's pretty neat. And a seven hundred and fifty square foot option, again, one bedroom and then the elevations below. Nine hundred square feet, this is where we get into the two bedroom option. A thousand square foot, foot, a two bedroom. Again, the elevations below, that's very nice. Nine hundred and fifty, this would be the uh. Uh, option that's above the garage. And then this is, this is the floor plan for the garage unit. And if I'm going too fast, please, please stop. I mean, these are the uh, additional options for the floor plan. And then finally, this is the twelve hundred square foot three bedroom option. So this would be the max size allowed per state law. So after all that, we, uh, we have a couple of questions for planning commission. Um, like John said, there's a lot of the requirements are. Codified in state law, so there's not really too much wiggle room that we have uh, when drafting the ordinance. It really needs to be consistent with state law. But there are a couple of areas that um, we want to talk about planning commission about. First. Is the um, should the city impose the eight hundred square foot size limitation when it's combined? With the junior accessory dwelling unit. So um, you can either choose to impose it, which would impose that eight hundred square feet or not, which would be the maximum. Size at twelve hundred square feet, um, even combined with a junior accessory in a single family home. And then the other part of it is the, what kind of design principles uh, should be considered when permitting ADUs. Um, one of the areas that we've seen quite a bit is consistency with the primary dwelling units as far as color. And style and, and architecture. Uh, but the city could choose to um. Uh, require uh, goals like uh, specific architectural styles. Or specific material or prohibiting specific material. Um, certainly, I, I, I don't believe the city would want to have like metal buildings for accessory dwellings for, for instance. Want to have a high quality materials, just like the um, what the, the building plans show. Here, and I'll just go back to one of them. So I guess as of right now, that concludes my presentation, but you know, this is a public workshop, so I, I really um. Encourage planning commission to bounce some ideas back and forth. Of course, John, my, myself, uh, Donna are all available for questions and um. This is a kind of an open forum, so please uh, let us know if you have any questions or thoughts or um, kind of where we go from here.
I have a quick question, David. When talking about allowing uh, an ADU to convert the garage, a. Attached garage to a single family residential unit. Is the city allowed to require that homeowner to replace the garage that's associated with their parking?
The, in the most recent state law, the city is, it cannot require replacement of parking when the garage is converted.
Thank you.
Okay, this, this is Commissioner Stewart. Can anyone hear me? Okay, thank you. So I also have a question about um, the garage conversion and I'm talking about.
You just muted Chair Stewart.
Trying again. So in my neighborhood, many of the houses have um, large three car garages. And so my question is, would that eight hundred square foot limit uh, fall into place there?
The, the eight hundred square foot limit would be for uh, detached uh, accessory dwelling units. The limit for the garage conversion, um, I believe is five hundred square feet. So it would be considered um. Uh, something that would be um, uh, as a junior accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so that's the largest structure that um, could be part of the garage conversion. Just five hundred square feet?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, so David, ta- talk about, talk about garage conversion. I mean, that's, that's probably the one area that. You know, the city will see more of, I think. And, and um, you know, and, and Joan's question about three car garage, I mean, that's. That's not a, as common, quite frankly, as a two car garage that these folks might convert. And the way I look at it is, yeah, it's an easy conversion. The city can't charge any fees. Can't charge any connection, connection charges. And I, I, I guess they just apply for a building permit. To do this work and then pay whatever the normal, you know, plan check inspection fees are associated with that. And they do it and then those two parking spaces that are in the garage are lost. Now, now do they have, and okay, so, so then you have the two parking spaces in front of the garage. So um. Where is the parking for the unit, you know, for the, for the garage conversion unit, I guess? Then that's, I guess that's a big issue. And that's a, this, and by the way, most of this is imposed by the state anyway, so I'm not sure. How local governments are really dealing with it right now.
Yeah, it's um, I mean, it, it, one of those uh. It's one of those requirements that, you know, if there's a lot of garage conversions in the same neighborhood, it, it definitely could be. Uh, could in off street parking for the area, you know, because street parking certainly is not designed. To, to handle both the, you know, two car garage plus the third uh, off street parking for the accessory dwelling unit. And that was um, in twenty nineteen. The requirement was that the city could and could re- have the garage uh, uh, off street parking replaced. So if someone. Converted their garage, they would need to find another spot. On the, on the site to allow for the two, two spaces to, to be covered. Um, or a replacement garage to be built. But the most recent state, unfortunately, um, added specific provisions that the city cannot. Um, uh, require those um, off street parking spaces to be replaced. Um. So I mean, there's really, unfortunately, there's really not much flexibility in that, John, um. In replacing, replacement spaces.
And David, I have a question about the parking as well. Um, in one of the, oh, this is Mallory, by the way. Um. Did you say that? The ADUs require one parking space? Cause I was under the understanding that, under, or under the impression that. They didn't have to provide parking, but, but they do.
There's still the one space per unit, but um, there, the one space can be in tandem, so it could be in, in tandem with the uh. With the driveway. So it's usually.
The attack, those are for the detached. Those are for the.
That's correct.
Detached and detached.
But not attached. It was, it would just be for the detached.
Or detached.
Just detached.
Okay.
So, so David, you're, you know, this, this imposition of the eight hundred square feet. Size limitation, this is for, this is for detached ADU, right?
That's correct.
Okay, not for a junior.
And the eight hundred square foot limit would be for the scenarios where someone wants to build. A detached accessory dwelling unit and have a junior accessory dwelling in it on their, at their house. So they convert a bedroom, for, for example.
Okay.
And build a detached accessory dwelling unit.
So we can only, we can only uh, impose a reduced square footage if they're doing it in combination, combination. If they're not, if they're not, we fall, it falls back on state law, which provides, what's the maximum detached?
Twelve hundred square feet.
My answer to the first question is not to impose a limitation, just because. Some people might have a lot big enough. Um. So, so that's my thoughts. I would, I vote, or I know we're not voting, but. To not have a size limitation, but.
I have a question. I, I, I agree that we probably don't need to impose a, a square foot limitation if it's only going to apply to. A detached ADU that's constructed with a junior ADU. But I, if, if I'm, uh, sounds like the state has put so much. Into law that there's not much we can do about it. If you put an ADU and a junior ADU. On every residential lot, let's say on my little court, the entire neighborhood changes immediately, but I guess we just live with it. We, the, I'm asking, my question is, does the city have any control or? What the impact will be on our neighborhood?
So. Yeah, so, so Di- David, I mean, so. So it, is there a restriction on lot coverage here? Or, you know, with all of this, can the entire lot basically be covered?
Right, in the um. The city cannot impose a lot coverage requirement and density requirement when considering the specialty of the detached eight hundred square feet. Um, and I believe that's the same for the um, twelve hundred square foot ADU as well. Um, cause in the past. Always that coverage requirement, um, but. Because the state allows for that eight hundred square foot special ADU. That's where you really can't focus in on those uh, those key development standards, such as coverage and, and density.
So then is, does that only leave setbacks?
That only leaves setbacks, that's correct.
David, Steph has a question. Um, so if there is no, no uh, limitation, maybe hundred, eight hundred square feet. Does that mean the threshold is the twelve hundred square feet that the city, the state currently allows?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Uh, this is Commissioner Link with a question. Are, are there any restrictions on the use of it? Is it? Can it be an Airbnb or is it have to be a residence? What? Is there any mention of that in the state law?
Uh, there's mention, um. That's a good question. The. As I recall, the state law states that it can be um, owner occupied or rented. But the rental has to be over thirty days.
Okay.
And the um, owner occupant, occupation requirement, there's a sunset date on it and I believe it's twenty twenty-five. So in, in the past, the city's required that it has to be owner occupied, both. The, you know, the, either the, the main dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit. The state has come in and said, no, it can actually be rented. But the rental has to be over thirty days. It has to be, it has to be a length of time. So to answer your question, I don't think it would. Work really well for Airbnb since they're typically not rented for over thirty, thirty days.
What was the sunshine?
The sunset is twenty twenty-five. Let me, let me look it up real quick.
While you're looking that up, David, um, I would just also like to share a little bit of information with the commission. As far as um. Those sets of plans that the city is working on with the other cities in the county. Um, those are covered by the grants, uh, the SB two grant. So um. When those are done, they will be fully engineered and all the people have to do is pull a um, a building permit. So and during that building permit process, that's when the city, with the planning department can look at whether or not it has the right setbacks. But what I really wanted to share was that when these seven sets of plans are done, they are going to be completely free to our citizens. So all the cities and the county that are participating, their citizens can use these. Plans free and in some cases, you know, they may be fewer to have. Um, a set of ADU plans uh, drawn up yourself, it could be. Anywhere between seventy-five hundred and ten thousand dollars for one set of plans. So this is a substantial savings uh, for the um. Um, uh, homeowners. Because these plans will also be fully plan checked, like I said, fully engineered and fully plan checked by the county's plan checkers. So you will be saving um, that amount too as well, the plan checking fees.
That's great.
Donna, talking about plans, when you're. Re- developing these plans, one of the second item on this slide is consistency. Of design principles with the primary dwelling unit. I think it definitely should be consistent with the primary dwelling here, but is that, will that go into your plan?
Well, the plans um, have several variations. For example. Um, they could either be stucco or wooden siding or metal siding. That's drawn into the elevations there, so they can match the house in that respect as, and color as well. And they'll be designed with two types of roofs. Uh, one with asphalt shingles and the other with tile that could also mask your house. But these um, roofs will also be set up for um, solar, because solar is required by the state. So when you get these plans, you still have to, you know, get somebody to construct it for you and then you still have to. Have somebody come in and put the solar on it. But overall, your, your savings are substantial.
But can we require the, the ADU to be consistent with the primary unit?
Yes, right now we do. Uh, we say that we always add a condition that colors and materials shall match the existing house. Um, and as far as this workshop goes, um. That's entirely up to you folks on what you want to see, because that's what we'll put in the design standards, but. Um, I would recommend having them look similar, if not, you know, fairly close.
Hi, this, this is Jon again. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about John's comment about if you cover every square inch. Of a lot with buildings, it really is going to change the whole flavor of the neighborhoods. So maybe we should reconsider um, imposing that eight hundred square foot limit as, as much as possible. And I absolutely think that we should require consistency with the primary dwelling unit, trying to keep things as, as attractive as possible for us.
Well, every square inch can't be uh, covered because while you have your four foot setbacks, the fire department. Is still going to require six or ten feet in between uh, buildings on the same property like they do now for fire safety reasons.
And that, and that could be landscape. I mean, would there be trees? I mean, I'm not, I'm trying to picture this. But just that, I don't want to see of, of roofs and concrete. Would we still be able to, to get the benefits from the living things that would be around it?
Yeah, and Joe, Joe, there's no, there's no, Joe, there's no question that what the state is pushing on local government is going to have. An impact on local neighborhoods. I mean, and you, you look at this in context. And, and the hope is that not every single family residential lot. Um, you, you know, promotes an ADU, otherwise, you know, you're gonna have. You're gonna, I don't know, it's, it's, I mean, I could see, I mean. you're gonna, I don't know, it's, it's, I mean, I could see, I mean, parking, I can see is going to be a huge issue. And then if you occupy a majority of the lot, I mean, like right now, our lot standard is what, forty percent coverage, something like that?
Fifty, yes.
Yeah, fifty percent coverage. So you start adding on these, these extra units. You're right, it's gonna occupy a, a, a great amount of that lot. And what Donna's stating is absolutely correct. I mean, there's fire standards that still apply, even though, you know, we have a setback, minimum setback set by, set, set by the state of California at four feet. I mean, the fire department is part of the building permit review can certainly request a little bit uh more space between the existing structure and the accessory structure. Um, you know, but, but state, state law, man, they're just, they're, this is, this is, this is, this is different. This is definitely different.
And yeah, one, one more comment on this too is um, one thing that's hard for me to kind of reconcile is the reason we have the fifty percent coverage rule is so that rain could land on the property and percolate back into the soil. And if we're exceeding that and covering more of the property, then we're not really following the state's stormwater guidelines anymore either.
And that is a big secondary issue associated with this and its impacts on the city's regional storm drain system. You're absolutely correct, Donna.
And Donna, if I may, um typically when we review ADUs, um commissioners and public, uh, we do try to work to make sure that the proposed ADU is consistent with the architectural style, style of the existing single family dwelling unit on the property. So that is kind of a standard practice of staff um in reviewing them.
Thank you.
Yeah, what are you, what are you seeing? I mean, you're, you're the guy at the front counter that sees these uh applications come through. What, what are you typically seeing right now at the counter for these ADU units?
Um, I think we, we are seeing folks hesitant with um, with the um, with the impact fees. But I think with the, the flexibility the state's providing, I think we may see more, a lot more um applications and new ADUs. We do, we do, we have seen in the last year, and Donna can attest, a pickup and, and increase in ADU, ADU applications in the city.
But a few of them though have uh learned from us about these new plans coming out that'll be free, about a reduction in free in fees. And so some of them have opted to just kind of hold back and watch to see what happens and what gets adopted. A couple though have come in and wanted to do like an ADU and a JADU together as one detached structure. But my understanding is the JADU has to be on the primary structure, not attached to a detached ADU. Um, i- i- would that be correct, David?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I've had a couple of plans come in where they've wanted to have an ADU and a JDU together as a detached structure. But my understanding is the JADU has to be attached or part of the primary structure and not the ADU itself.
That's correct, yeah. It's, it's part of the um primary single family unit. That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to go back and answer the question regarding the uh the rental terms. So yes, I was correct, the um, the city can impose a rental requirement more than thirty days. So that would um handle the um, the Airbnb, Airbnb question. And then as far as um the owner occupant occupancy requirement, the exclusion to require owner occupancy expires in December thirty first, twenty twenty four, so basically twenty twenty five. So right now, the city cannot impose an owner occupancy requirement. Um, it can be, it can be rented out, but it has to be over that thirty days. Um, and then as it relates to the development standards, I mean, really what, what, a lot of times it comes down to is whether or not the, the the site or the property has enough room first to build uh a detached accessory dwelling unit, uh adhering to the four foot setback and other um, other requirements that building may impose or fire may impose. Um, the city cannot um impose development standards um beyond what the state allows. So we cannot impose a five foot setback, for instance. Um, coverage is also not considered a standard that the city can impose. Now, I said that the city cannot impose density, but I was actually incorrect. The city does still um look at density as a factor in allowing an ADU, but typically speaking, the density for a single family dwelling, if it had two, then um it still would be within. It all depends on how large the site is, of course, but that's an area that the city can, can look at um when reviewing ADUs. But other requirements are really set, set in stone by the state, as well as um the city can look at some of the other typically uh looked at development standards, such as lot coverage.
David, I'm confused. Are you saying that right now the ADU has to be owner occupied?
No, right now the ADU can be either owner occupied or rented out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that provision sunsets, David.
That's correct.
Right, as you said.
What happens when that provision sunsets?
The city can require an, an owner occupancy um requirement.
With the ADU?
Yeah.
That would make no sense to me. I mean, if you're building an ADU, it's either for your in-laws or your grandfather. But the owner, the, the person that owns the property is gonna still live in the big house.
Not necessarily. Say, for example, I moved into an ADU in my backyard and let my daughters moved into the main structure. So the owner is occupying either the ADU or the primary structure. So that is.
And the previous, I'm sorry, Donna, the previous requirement was or uh it would be, it would be owner occupant, occupancy for the primary dwelling unit or the ADU. Now, um, the state law allows for both to be rented out.
So both can be rented out once it sunsets?
No, both can be rented out right.
Now.
When it sunsets, the city can impose a owner occupancy requirement.
And that's twenty twenty five?
That's correct.
And again, and that's, and that's unless, unless the, you know, state legislature, you know, goes in and modifies it and reinstates the ability to rent the units, which what we're seeing is probably, highly likely, you know, I, I, I mean, what I'm seeing and all they're trying to accomplish. So David, can you? I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused. So, so when we're dealing with density, do we fall back on the general plan density of these neighborhoods?
Yep.
So that we are, we cannot exceed the general plan density with, with the consideration of these AD unit, ADU units?
That's correct, yeah.
So our density for our one zone is uh zero to eight houses per net acre. Does that mean that every time we have another ADU come into, say, a certain block? The staff will have to look at those calculations on the whole block every time?
Well, for the individual, the individual property, yeah.
Wow.
So we're gonna have to table, we're gonna have to do some kind of a table for that, help them.
Yes, that would be very helpful. It's gonna be a lot more work for staff, but you know, we, we really do need the housing. There's a lot of people out there that are couch surfing that need a place to, to lay their heads down at night.
So, so, so the bottom, the bottom line is you can't exceed the density that's prescribed by the general plan. That's the bottom line. So that's the out. I mean, we gotta look at it. That's, that's, that's really the controlling factor on, you know, the consideration of these, these types of units.
John, I have a question. So in that case, if it's, you have a block, let's say the block is an acre, there's eight dwelling units on that acre. Does that mean they can't exceed and have more the, any ADUs on there or second units?
Well, we can, we can take a look at it a little bit further and, and report to, to um to commission and staff. Um, I think we I think we'll probably need to just go in and take a look and, and see exactly what it says and um provide that information later, and also look at what other cities are doing as far as imposing any density requirements um and, and see how that's handled. Uh, I think it can be a little uh confusing as far as how state law is written and um the, the, the development standards and requirements are changing so rapidly. You know, there's uh multiple bills over the course of three years uh that changed, changed the requirements drastically. And I think density is one of those areas that we'll just need to take a look at a little bit further um and see if it's something that we can, we can help staff um, staff impose.
Thanks, David.
Curiosity question. Could a homeowner take an RV and put it in his backyard and say, okay, it's an ADU?
It has to be, um, well, the short answer is yes, they can, but it has to be on a permanent foundation and it has to meet the other requirements uh per building. Um, so uh even a manufactured home can be considered an ADU.
Okay, but an RV on wheels is not, not an ADU.
Right, right, unless they meet certain requirements, yeah.
That's interesting, because right now, say, for example, if you had a vacant lot and instead of a house you wanted to put um a, a mobile home, for example, which is similar to an RV, only not quite as, quite as mobile. But we have a requirement that the mobile home has to be uh ten years old or newer. I wonder if we'll be able to impose some sort of restriction like that on mobile homes and RVs when it comes to ADUs. I mean, we're checking into, I guess.
Yeah.
David, can we talk about multifamily and how that works? So your slides said, they can convert non-habitable space. Does that just mean their garage?
Well, it means, here, let me go back up to that slide.
And then can HOAs can't, they can't say no to an ADU, right? Because of the state?
That's right. Oh, a non-habitable space would be like the, I know it sounds a little funny, but it, it would be like the janitor closet or the uh boiler room. Um, it would be any space that is considered non-habitable at a, at a multifamily development. So if they have a, a storage room that is sized appropriately for a, a junior ADU, less than five hundred square feet, that can technically be converted um into an ADU.
Or it could be a garage.
Like, yeah. But they're limited up to only twenty five percent of their, of the existing multi-units, multifamily units. So there is some limitation there.
Okay, um, we should probably open to the public if there's any raised hands or any emails that came in. I'm not seeing any emails, but I think Norma's says that somebody has a question. No?
Do we need to answer those two questions, Donna? I think we all agree that we don't need the eight hundred square foot size limitation? Is that correct?
That was my understanding from the discussion.
And we talked about consistency. We're okay with that, so.
Yes.
Fascinating evening.
So if anybody in the audience has any questions, please hit the raised hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Here, do you want me to stop sharing screen, Donna?
Um. Well, maybe not, because it might pertain to a question that's asked, so you might want to flip back through. I think if somebody does raise their hands like Annabelle did before, we should be able to see a little box with their question or comment. I just want to make sure people have enough time that are in the audience to make sure that their questions get addressed and or something, you know, we haven't addressed already.
I see a raised hand, Donna.
Okay, I don't, probably because you're the uh the uh person, the host, because I don't see it on my side. Go ahead and, and uh check it.
So I'm asking them to unmute so they could speak.
Thank you.
Hello, number six oh four. You can speak now. Hello, you, you can speak now, audience member.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I have a question regarding um the setbacks. Is it my understanding that if they convert a separate building or convert a garage, they can extend it clear out to the property line and not have a setback?
No, the city can impose a four foot setback. They could not extend all the way to the property line.
As I just said, there were no setbacks in version.
Donnie, do you want me to, to?
Yes, yes, please. I'm not quite hearing the question.
If it's a, if it's a converted uh structure, um, that's in, in a place that's less than the four feet, it can stay. So if it's a converted structure, it doesn't have to be moved to meet the four foot requirement. If it's a new structure, a new accessory dwelling unit, it must be four feet away from the property lines.
Well, they could, yeah, yeah, under that, then they could extend it clear to the property line then.
I, I'm sorry, could you say that again? I, I didn't quite hear you.
I said, I forget one scenario that you quoted, then it would, there would be no setback. They could, they could extend it to the property line, because there'd be no setback.
If it's a, if it's a converted structure, like for instance, if it's a, if someone has an accessory structure that is on the property line, like existing, and it's converted to an ADU, the city cannot require that structure to be moved to meet the four feet requirement.
Okay, so only if it's existing, yeah?
Only if it's existing, that's.
Okay. And I had one other question. How does this, if you're allowed to put another separate dwelling, a separate residential dwelling there and, and then another junior one there, you would have like three dwellings on the property. Does that increase, as far as a marijuana code, does that allow them to, to then have three different marijuana grows, any structure? Go plant?
No. The um administrative cultivation permit for residential is one, is six plants or one permit per parcel.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Gabrielle, do you see any other uh raised hands or calls?
No, that was the only one, Donna, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have uh uh more presentation, David?
Uh, no, I think one of the areas that I, that we need to come and provide a little bit more info is the density requirement, what standards the city can apply. Um but other than that, I think we've got what we need to prepare the ordinance and also the design guidelines. Um, and then in October, we're going to provide and come back with uh additional information about the fee and um, and additional fee options as far as exempting uh impact fees for certain types of ADUs uh for certain income groups. Um, but I think we have what we need from commission to, to move forward. Uh, are there any additional questions for, from commissioner or otherwise?
Um, sorry, Dave, to interrupt, uh David, to interrupt. Uh, I do see a raised hand from Norma. Let's see, from staff.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
So Donna, you know that this particular topic is near and dear to my heart because I've been fascinated with tiny homes for years. And when this came up, tiny homes came to my mind, but a lot of those come with wheels. So if we're looking at design principles, those will not be allowed. And then architecturally, are we going to be looking at something that fits in with the dwelling, or do we have, you know, a black little steel box type of look with a real traditional house in front? Will, will those things be considered or or will it just be up to the homeowner as to, yes, I will go with the plans provided, or they bring their own and this is what they're looking at?
So, so um, Donna, you want me to try to answer this?
Sure.
Okay, so, so, so Norma, I mean, the reality is that, the intent is that it's a permanent structure that's part of the property. And, and many, in many cases, the And, and many, in many cases, the tiny homes are, are um, you know, permanent on the property. If they have wheels, then they would have to be, you know, made as part of a permanent structure. I mean, that happens a lot with, with modular homes. I mean, it's still, still, still different. So physically it becomes part of the real property. As it relates to architectural characteristics, um, I think Donna and the other planning directors that have been working on these um, plans for accessory dwelling units for, you know, county-wide application, have done a good job in trying to capture a many types of architectural styles. They're not going to capture them all. So if you have an individual that has um, a different architectural style that's not represented in the examples that are provided, they're certainly capable of hiring their own architect and modifying what's there or simply coming up with their own plans. So um, the way I look at it, there's a lot of, lot of opportunities. And there's certainly no preclusion from allowing a tiny home as an accessory dwelling unit. It's just that it has to be a permanent structure. I mean, I think that's, that's the key.
Hmm. Well, John, her question has me thinking of a question now. Because at one time, the city manager and I were talking about tiny homes for homeless people. And we were kind of just throwing some ideas out there. And what if we had tiny homes on wheels like she's talking about? That could maybe be used for uh, farmworker housing in the summertime and then maybe be moved into the city to be used as clustered housing for the homeless during the winter rainy months. That might be something to think about as well. Also, um, her question brings one other question to mind too, that I wanted to bring up to the, the commission. Right now, if a person, with the way our code has been written, if a person has um, say, an invalid parent and they wish to bring in a mobile home under a conditional use permit to be used as housing for that person, so they would be on the same property as their child and could be um, you know, administered to, taken care of. It's, I mean, I know that, that CUP should go away because this uh, mobile home that has been permitted under a CUP um, is technically an ADU. And so it, it seems like that part of the code maybe should go away that requires an ADU for that type of situation.
You know, Donna, I think, I think you got two, two different, two different distinct examples. They certainly are able to, to construct a permit ADU to accommodate um, a family member, as you've described. But if they have an emergency condition that um, requires temporary housing, then that's where you have your CUP process. So I don't see the CUP process being eliminated. I just, I honestly, I don't. Because you may have a situation where that um, unit, as Norma has suggested, is a tiny home that's brought in on wheels for a temporary basis, managed under that CUP process and under those certain terms and conditions and is allowable on that property as opposed to the ADU that we've talked about, which the way I'm looking at this becomes more of a permanent structure. What, what, do you agree with that, David?
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, um, I mean, the, the ADU has its own process and you can keep a secondary process for the scenario that you're talking about, Donna.
Okay, thank you. Lot to think about, you've given us a lot of information tonight. Are there any more questions from the planning commission? No? And I'm guessing there's no more hands or I'm not seeing any emails. Okay, well, thank you so much for your presentation, David. You did an excellent job and you
You're welcome.
certainly, certainly gave us a lot to think about. I look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we should probably move on with the rest of our agenda. If you could pull that up, perfect, Gabrielle. Okay, um, I'm not sure if, Joan, can you see what's left on the agenda? Would you like to complete the meeting or would you like Vice Chair Link to continue?
Oh, Steve is doing a great job. I'm just sitting here watching.
Okay, thank you. Well, if you'd like to continue on, Mr. Link, we'd appreciate it.
Oh, certainly. So it looks like we're on uh, on item number five, which is, it says that it is planning commission comments.
Okay, do we have any type of comments from the commissioners on any other topic that's not on the agenda?
Has anyone besides me noticed a large number of lawns that are just being allowed to turn brown with weeds two feet high?
Well, we have had a lot of complaints and we've got a lot of open cases right now. And unfortunately, it's kind of a slow process. Um, and also our code enforcement officer has been out um, all week due to a family emergency. And uh, that kind of falls on me to be the code enforcement officer this week. So
Oh, good, so I'm not the only person who's noticed this.
No, 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 we've gotten many calls and we're trying to address them as quickly as we can.
Great, thank you.
But if, you know, if you have one in mind, please send me an email with the um, address. And if it's not on our list, we'll add it to the list and get right on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that goes for anybody in the audience as well. If you want to email me or Michelle, uh, we'd be happy to look into it and make sure that they're on our list. Okay, any other comments?
All right, so that sounds like we're on to item six, the county referral correspondence information.
Um, the only, I haven't gotten a county referral per se, but StanCOG and the planning directors for the various cities and the county um, have gotten some, um, well, we call them RENA numbers from the state. It's RHNA and it's Regional Housing Needs Assessment. So um, what the state does is they determine how many um, houses, both above market rate and below market rate that the county needs to provide. And uh, I believe it's 34,000 for this next cycle. So we have been meeting as a group and they have actually uh, created a tool to kind of help us look at the various, various factors that may affect different cities and different areas for this housing, for these housing numbers. And so we're kind of going through the, the workshop process right now, adjusting the different factors to, you know, kind of make sure that it's, it's even across the board and that the cities can have numbers that they can actually work with. While it's very difficult to get affordable housing in because the cities don't typically, typically build housing themselves, uh, we encourage it through um, different codes and different fees to try to make it more easier for developers to construct homes. And while I've got David here actually still on, would the ADUs work towards our RENA numbers as far as providing uh, below-market-rate housing? Do you know?
Yeah, they can, yeah, absolutely.
All right, well, that's, that's a big plus right there. We may be able to get close to our numbers. Riverbanks is looking like we're between, oh, like 1,100 and 1,700 units, um, which is a lot if you think about it. That's about half of Crossroads West. So we, we have lofty goals, but uh, the whole point of having a goal is trying to reach it and do what you can to reach that number. So um, that's good to know, thank you. Um, so um, like I said, we're uh, going through these RENA numbers, trying different scenarios. Uh, some of it has to do with um, income to jobs ratio. Some of it has to do with um, uh, how, how close the city is to the ACE train, how close it is to bus routes. Just a lot of factors to kind of play with. And uh, once I get an idea of what works for Riverbank, but also is, is fair to the other cities, I'll be sharing that with the city manager. And then eventually there'll be a StanCOG meeting where there'll be a vote on this. So um, that's keeping me kind of busy these last couple of days. Uh, but that's all I have to discuss as far as the county goes right now.
All right, well, well, item number seven is still you. So that is items seven, 7.1 is uh, project updates after your comments.
Okay. Uh, generally, my staff comments have to do with city council meetings, so I'll go ahead and discuss that first. Um, at the last city council meeting, um, the project that you folks uh, heard at your last meeting uh, called the Heritage Collection, um, that one did get approved by the city council for a rezone to PD. And um, an approval of the map, which was contingent on the second reading of the DA, which is next Tuesday. Uh, Countryside Three that you heard is in a similar situation. Uh, the rezone was approved by the city council on their first reading. They have to come back with the second reading next week. Um, and then the map is contingent upon that approval there. And then um, as far as uh, projects, uh, I know some people out in the audience are interested in the Riverwalk project. Um, that is in the northwest area, uh, just outside city limits. And uh, that project, um, I think you know from our last meeting, there was a notice of preparation that went out and we took public comments for 45 days. And then those comments went to the environmental consultant to address those comments um, in the EIR. And excuse me, as they are working upon, or working on that, uh, they have sent staff a draft copy of the specific plan. And so I've got to staff reviewing that. And then um, by uh, next week, they're supposed to have any comments to me on if there are omissions or sections they don't like or sections that seem incomplete. And we'll get all those comments out to the consultant. So then the next time we hear back from the consultant, we should have um, a draft of the um, specific plan and the administrative draft of the um, environmental document, which is more comments on it. Eventually, there'll be a draft EIR that comes out to the public to comment on and then a final draft of the EIR. So uh, this is going to be a long process because it's kind of complicated. You know, we took, let's see, from 2016 to 2019 to process the Crossroads West project and get that annexed into the city. And that was in 2019. And now here it is, 2021, and they're just pushing dirt this year. So the Riverwalk project, I expect, will have um, a similar timeframe of probably, you know, five or so years until you see dirt being pushed around out there. But for those of you who don't know about the project, it's a 998, 993 acre project. That'll be approximately 80% senior housing and 20% uh, regular market housing. And the senior housing itself will be um, in several villages. And they will be from regular, single-family residential. So you could buy into this if you're 55 and older. And then if, um, say, for example, you start having medical problems, you could move to a more supervised type of housing. Um, eventually, they plan to have a section for uh, people with uh, memory loss, dementia-type uh, issues. So it's the type of housing, senior housing, where you'll be able to move in and hopefully age through uh, your life within the same community. And the 20% of housing um, that's non uh, age-restricted could be like, uh, for example, for me, if my, my parents were living in the age-restriction section and I wanted to be close to them. So that gives you that kind of flexible option as well. And I would like to just, the reason why I was kind of gearing up to this is I wanted to note that um, I have been talking to the developers about um, the ADUs. Because, you know, the state says any residentially zoning property um, has a right to have ADUs. So I'm insisting that the ADUs throughout be non-age-restricted. So if you were in your 60s or 70s and you had an ADU in your backyard, you could have somebody who's 23 or 25 and a nursing student come, stay at the ADU and help you through your medical problems. And they've been very agreeable to that. So I'm quite pleased um, with that aspect of it. Um, that's really all I have to share unless somebody has some comments or questions.
Just a comment FYI for the commission. In the Modesto B yesterday or the day before, there was a column written, Taking Riverbank to Task for Developing the Riverwalk Project by Denny Jackman. If any of you know who that is.
Yes, we've, we've gotten letters from him. We understand his position. But, you know, um, the state's requiring housing. They want us to build housing and unfortunately, you know, Riverbank can't go to the north because of the river. We can't go south because of Modesto. We can't go east because of our agreements with Oakdale. And the only place that we can go is to the west. So um, fortunately, you know, for uh, Mr. Jackman and others who feel like we shouldn't be building this much housing, the state's requiring it and we have to go somewhere. So, you know, the, the applicants are going with the full-blown EIR. We're hoping to, you know, look at any places that are sensitive and protect those areas. Uh, we still would like to protect some agriculture. I know that the cherry orchard that is existing will remain in the project site and will be used for um, stormwater overflow in the wintertime as well as being part of our trails and, and walking system. So that's why it's really important for the community to reach out and provide us comments on this project when these documents do come out. Because we want to capture everything. We want to protect what's sensitive. We want to move areas that don't need to be in that exact spot. So we have a good project that's good for the community as well as good for the earth. And I guess that's all I have to say on that. Uh, next page, Gabriel? Do we have another page on our? Oh, there we go, adjournment. Sorry, it's been a long day.
All right, so item number eight is our adjournment for the regular planning commission meeting. Next time is October 19th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Look forward to seeing everybody at that point.
I hope so, thank you, everybody.
Good night, good, thank you, Dave.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.